Hello, I'm Jim Shields, your town moderator. And once again, we're doing a preview of the special town meeting, which is going to be held at the high school on Monday, October 21st at 7:00. As you know, by tradition and sometimes by necessity, the town has a couple, and sometimes more than a couple, of town meetings each year. In May is the annual town meeting where the budget is adopted and a number of zoning and similar matters are addressed. And then typically in the fall, sometime in September or October, we have more of a business meeting addressing some of the financial and fiscal issues that the town is facing, addressing negotiated pay raises and other matters. And this year is no exception. We have a number of articles that are financially oriented on the warrant. And the warrant, by the way, you should have received in the reminder last week. If you did not, the reminder, the warrant is posted on the moderator's page on the town webpage. This year, all but two of the articles on the warrant for this year's meeting are sponsored by the Board of Selectmen. And with me this evening is Paul Federici, the chair of the board. And Paul and I will have a dialogue for the next few minutes on what it is that the board is looking for the town to act upon. And I want to encourage all of you, as I do in each one of these broadcasts, to recognize that you, as a citizen, are entitled to come and vote and act as the town's legislative body. That's what town meeting is. And there are many important issues that will directly affect your quality of life, the pays that are given to some of the town employees, what is going to be done with some recreation areas, and other important issues. So it's important for all of you, as many of you as possible, to come and listen, participate, enter into debate if that's what you wish, ask questions of those that are seeking for your approval for things, so that you can make an informed decision and help this town continue to grow. So Paul, thank you for being with me tonight. And we have, as I mentioned, a number of articles. And the first one has to do with what I would think to be relatively good news, where the board is asking for the approval to transfer $500,000 to actually reduce the tax rate. Can you tell us what that is all about, please?
Sure. And thank you, Mr. Moderator, for once again hosting this meeting. It's a pleasure to be here.
Thank you.
Article one has to do with the fact that we, in conjunction with appropriations, we have noted that we have some funds available. And in light of the fact that tax rates are going up, and you know, in the foreseeable future, we don't know what will happen. I know there's some plans in the works for other things that could raise taxes. We felt that it would be a good idea to try to get some money ahead of the curve, if you will, and hopefully reduce the tax rate this year by even a small amount. We figure every little bit will help.
Now, I understand that these funds are likely to come, or at least they hopefully will come, from what is commonly called free cash, the town's so-called savings account. I don't know, as we are taping this tonight, whether the free cash has been certified. The process by which any town can use its savings account, its free cash, is a fairly complicated process because it requires the Department of Revenue to certify that a certain amount of free cash is in fact available. So while we did have a quantifiable number at the very end of our last fiscal year, and we could use that number in any appropriations or transfers that the town would vote to approve, once the new fiscal year starts, the town no longer has certified free cash until the town accountant submits a series of papers to the Department of Revenue. That has all been done, and it was done as timely as it could have been done. But we're hopeful that the certification will have occurred prior to the town meeting itself on the 21st. Article two talks about a transfer of funds to purchase a building. And that's sort of mysterious, so maybe you could explain what, as much as you can, given where we are in that process.
It is sort of fashionably vague, isn't it? Unfortunately, what happened was, as many of the townspeople know, over the last 11 years, there's been, I believe, four space studies done on Town Hall. Most recent being within the last fiscal year. We commissioned Reinhardt Associates to do an assessment of our town buildings, and they came back with a plan that involved basically retrofitting the old fire station on Shaker Road for the IT department, and then going into Town Hall and basically adding 2,000 square feet to the existing building. Now, this was a plan, there were three plans. This was a plan that we sort of leaned towards at the time, for a total cost of, I believe, around a million dollars. Now, as fate would have it, which is always the way it works, after we did the study, a building was identified in town that's for sale. This building has 9,600 square feet, which would fit the needs of the town for years and years and years to come. As a matter of fact, someone who was at one of the meetings said that way back in 2000, when they did a space study, they said the town would need 7,000 square feet of space to carry it forward into the foreseeable future. So this would really fit the bill. We don't have, what we're looking for from the town at this point is basically the ability to enter into negotiations. First thing we have to do is get together a RFP, a request for proposal, and basically put that out to anyone in town who has rental space that would fit the qualifications that we're looking for. Once we get those, we'd have to choose a building that fit the needs we're looking for within the parameters that we had set, and then enter into negotiations with them to buy it. Right now, the building that we were actually looking at, the cost of that building for the 9,600 square feet is actually less than the 2,000 square foot renovation in Town Hall. So the people that have looked at it from the town are all in favor of it, and it would be a great, it would be another great jewel for the town to have it. There are some, the only drawbacks being, of the 9,600 square feet, two-thirds of it is rented at this point, under three-year leases. Now, the downside to that is it would be a gradual, gradual moving of town offices. You can move, you know, 3,200 square feet would be available, and then after three years, we could move the rest in. The good news is, whatever, if this was to pass the town and we entered into negotiations and were successful, then we would actually have tenants paying a majority of the bonding. Not that we want to be landlords, but you know, you do what you have to do in certain circumstance. So basically, what we're looking for from the town is the ability to enter into negotiations with the seller of this building, with the hopes that if everything went well, we could, in theory, lock up, lock up the building, so we'd have first right at it, and come back at the town meeting in May with the plan of exactly what we need for financing.
So will you be asking for any specific dollar amount at the town meeting itself?
No. We're not, like I said, we're sort of in the infancy in this, so we don't have a dollar amount. I know, I don't know if you have on there that appropriations recommended this, but they have. And they were even, they were even suggesting, not a specific dollar amount, but that they would, if this passed, assist us in getting the necessary funding to undertake this, if it became, if everything worked out and it became available.
Capital planning, have they spoken on this?
I haven't spoken to capital planning, but I believe they have approved it. I believe they're in favor, yes.
Right. So the vote that would be taken then on the 21st would not commit the town to anything. It would be more of an authorization to the Board of Selectmen to enter into negotiations with the expectation that if those negotiations prove beneficial, that a more specific, in fact, a very specific proposal would be put before the town at the May meeting in 2014?
Yes. Because obviously, you know that an owner obviously is going to be, the kindness of their heart sit there for an extended period of time to let the town, because the wheels move so quickly in town business, to let the town, you know, take its time to do this, to enter into a contract. They're in it to make money, too. So we want to make sure that if everything passes and it does work out that it's going to be beneficial for us after, you know, really taking a look at it, you know, that we can actually sort of get a, pin it down so we don't lose it.
Okay. So that is Article two. Article three seems to be somewhat inconsistent with what you're saying, but perhaps not. It has to do with, as you mentioned, there was some discussion about the rehabilitation of the old fire station. And this article seeks funding to accomplish that. What's the board's position on that article going forward?
Well, as of now, you know, we left it in, obviously, if Article two were to pass, then we would probably pull Article three just because of the fact that it's sort of hypocritical to be looking at a new, you know, a new building and also go ahead and do, I believe, I believe the renovations were like $163,000 to that building. To do the renovations to that building, knowing that within a couple of years, you know, three years at the latest, it would be vacant again. So it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be who of us to have both articles, you know, put both articles into play. So if Article two were to pass, then Article three will probably be pulled.
To that point, it's my understanding that both the appropriations and capital planning committees have voted not to recommend Article three.
I believe that's both because they like the idea involved in Article two much better.
All right. Articles four, five, and six, I guess we can speak of all three of them in a group because each of them has to do with appropriation of funds with respect to negotiated collective bargaining agreements, one with the Town Employees Union, one with the Police Union, and one with the Fire Union. Can you explain what that's all about, please?
Yes. During the course of this past fiscal year, we entered into contract negotiations with, well, actually, the Town Employees Union has been, it was entered into a while ago, and then Police and Fire were this past year. And we ratified contracts for all three after the end of the fiscal year. So because of that, instead of, in lieu of doing a reserve fund transfer, to make it more transparent for the townspeople, we decided to add these articles to the warrant so that the townspeople can actually see what the contract negotiations, you know, what the increases are. Because of the contract negotiations, and also to, and also to split them out, so it's not just, you know, dollar items on a regular budget, they can actually see what, which dollar amounts are going to each different department. I know, I'm sort of probably stepping on your toes here, but I know the appropriations has recommended the one for the Town Employees Union, which is Article four, the one for the Police, which is Article five. And we're still, there's still a couple of things we have to iron out with them on Article six, but I'm confident that that will be all set by the time we get to town meeting as far as appropriations.
Right. When the warrant was published, the published warrant states that the Appropriations Committee didn't recommend due to insufficient information. And as the chair has just indicated, two of the three, they have now, the Appropriations Committee has now voted to approve, and they will make their position known at the town meeting on the Fire contract, once they have received the additional information that they are seeking. And just to echo the point that Paul made, in the past, because these contracts, it's not unusual to have them extend beyond the negotiation, extend beyond the close of the fiscal year. In the past, what has been done to fund them has been a request to the Appropriations Committee and the Board of Selectmen for a so-called reserve fund transfer. The town votes each annual meeting, we vote a reserve fund for unanticipated or unexpected or emergency types of funding requests. But the Appropriations Committee has sought and is now implementing, and I'm sure is pleased to see that this process is continuing, that to the extent possible, matters such as these raises not simply be done by two committees, but be approved by the town in an effort to make sure all of the fiscal issues facing the town are as transparent and broadcast to as many folks as possible. Article seven is a transfer from one fund to another for $4,000. What's that all about?
Well, as people who have pets in town probably realize, we've brought our animal control officers and department up to a 21st century level. We've always had good people, but they've been part-time. But now we have two people that are very good. Our leading animal control officer, Tom O'Connor, has been wonderful in raising new revenues by getting animals licensed, being on top of things as far as any incidents that have to do with animals. And up until now, the budget has been really bare bones for the animal control, to the extent that, within the last fiscal year, the budget strictly consisted of salaries, nothing else. Now we've got our animal control officers buying their own equipment, buying their own shirts, they've been using their own vehicles. And we're trying to give them, you know, you want a professional-looking organization, but we weren't really treating them like that. So we're trying to give them money to be able to fund other items, be able to buy equipment, buy the shirts that they wear, and just be able to run the animal control department in a professional manner.
And the Appropriations Committee has voted to recommend the approval of this particular article. Article eight, something near and dear to my own heart, since it deals with the legal services budget, but I hasten to add that Article eight has nothing to do with me, none of the, none of the funds that are being sought have anything to do with me. It calls for a $10,000 transfer or appropriation and for a prior fiscal year's bill. What is that all about?
Well, as the townspeople may know, we had one heck of a year last year with different legal issues. And needless to say, due to those legal issues, there were a few, fortunately, nothing, well, with the exception of one, nothing really came of the others. But in order to defend the town and also to be proactive in a couple instances, we sort of overextended our budget for legal costs. So what we're trying to do here is, because that's a previous year bill, we're hoping to get the money, you know, be able to transfer the money to pay those legal bills that are from the previous fiscal year.
Appropriations has voted to approve the $10,000 amount. I will say, this is an unusual motion, or article, rather, in that unlike most other motions made at town meeting, some of which, or most of which are a majority, some of which are two-thirds, if a transfer or an appropriation for a prior year's bill is made at a special town meeting, as this one is, it actually requires a nine-tenths vote, a 90% approval. So that if there are any no votes, we will need to do a teller count. So hopefully, if the town sees fit to approve that, it will be done unanimously. As I mentioned at the beginning, there are two articles on this year's warrant that are not sponsored by the Board of Selectmen. Article nine is sponsored by the Community Preservation Committee. And George Kingston, the chair of that committee, was not able to be present for the taping tonight, but we have the next best. We have Colin Drury, who heads our Recreation Commission. And Article nine is looking for funding for repairs to the pool at Pine Knoll. And Colin, haven't we been here before? Haven't we already done something along these lines?
Yes, we have. And it's, it does sadden me to come back here and speak with the town about this project, but conceptually speaking, the town is for this project. And this project is going to, again, allow us to continue the programs that we run up at Pine Knoll. And the reason we're back is that, as part of the research and all of the work that we've done for this project, we had to actually sub out a portion of it to a company to give us a budget for the project. And that was the budget that we brought to the town last year. And we were fully, you know, had the right information from here. We were fully respected of this company. We respected it a lot. To find out that the budget that that company gave us was incorrect was hard knowledge to get, you know, it's very hard knowledge to bring in because we had done so much work on the research for our town. You know, our town currently sends about 2,000 participants to this camp every season. We send all of our soccer players up there. We send our T-ball, T-ballers up there. And the camp itself serves really well. And since 1996, when the property was purchased for $275,000, that camp has run on its own since then. So the camp actually hasn't asked for money. So when we came to the town to ask for money, we were excited because we were going to continue the great tradition of the property. And to have to come back was very, very difficult. But we can assure you that we've done all the research that is needed. And when we got to the point where we found out that the budget was incorrect, was actually at the request for qualifications portion, where Bargman Hendry, the company that did win that request for qualifications, you know, came to us and said, "I don't think you have enough money." So what we did is, we said to them, you know, "Let's go out to bid. Let's get that bid from a construction company, a signed bid, that tells us that the first person who gave us that budget was wrong, or you're wrong." Because right now, we don't know who's wrong. So we did that, you know, last winter, to find out that the Bargman Hendry, the person who did win the request for qualifications, was correct. And the budget should be of the $800,000 range, and not the $450,000 range, which brings us back to the town for money for the project.
And just what is it, could you describe for everybody, what it is that these additional funds, the total project, will entail? What's going to happen?
Again, conceptually, the project hasn't changed since that day that I was in front of the town last October. We haven't added any aspects of the project. We are looking for the pool to be able to function within the amount of people that come up to the camp we have now. And with 2,000 people coming per season, you know, you're looking at probably something along the lines of a 4,500-square-foot pool. That is about 150,000, 160,000 gallons. The one we have now is 105,000 gallons, and it's only five feet deep, which is great for a competition training pool. You know, this pool was built back in 1958 for Red Silva, who did the Pine Knoll Swim School. So the pool itself is going to bring not only new programs to the town, it's going to be able to then continue the tradition of the programs we currently have. So some of the new programs, besides the Pine Knoll summer program, is, we're actually going to be able to offer children's swim lessons again. You know, that is something that the town hasn't done in quite some time. That is one thing to me that is probably the most important thing a youth can learn is how to swim. There's a quote out there, and it's Richard Lipcheck, which is a very, very well-known ESPN person. He said that "No one dies from not being able to play basketball." And that really hit home to me. And I actually went out and became a swim instructor and actually taught swimming, because it's very important for a child to be able to know how to protect themselves, to get them out of a pool and out of a situation. Because humans, we haven't really figured out quite how to breathe water. So that's one of the main things, you know, that I see coming to this facility. Other things include senior programs. You know, there's something to be said about the non-impact of water programs. Right now, our pool is about 62 to 66 degrees, not the right amount of temperature for little children for swim lessons or for elderly to come into the pool and actually get a benefit out of it. We're also going to be able to now have a six-lane pool in this town. And our summer swim program that we have with youth actually won the championship this year. And they would actually be able to practice in a six-lane pool and then have meets up at our facility. What's really nice about meets is that is possible revenue for the town to the general fund. So if we host a meet and we bring in revenue, that goes right back to the town. So this facility is now, could possibly be a revenue generator for this town, which is always exciting to be able to bring money back into the town for other projects.
Now, you've been discussing some of the enhancements and improvements that we could enjoy, but am I correct that the existing pool, even as it is, leaks? And so we're losing water, we're losing money with the facility in its present state?
Yes. The scary, I guess, specifications that we're looking at now is about 4,000 gallons a day leak out of the pool, which turns out to be about 300,000 gallons a season. We're not even talking a year. We're talking an eight-week, nine-week season, we lose 300,000 gallons. Obviously, a new pool, you know, you're going to lose a little bit due to the sun, but that's about it. You know, that's a normal amount of water that you would lose for a pool. But 4,000 gallons, 4,000 gallons a day is unbelievable. And you know, we don't know where that water's going. You know, that's the scary part. And it's also on an environmental standpoint, to have to pump 4,000 gallons of water out of our well back into the pool per day, is not good for the environment. And then again, we have to chemicalize this water. So then we have to redo the pH and the chlorine. And then where's that pH, you know, chemicals and those chlorine chemicals going? They're going back into the groundwater. A pool really should be its own system. Water in, goes in, gets chemicalized, goes back into the pool. And it filters its own system. It should be its own water ecosystem. It shouldn't be asking actually the environment to help it be its own system, which poses a lot of challenges for us.
Certainly. Now, if the town does vote to approve the request, what's your timeline to get things done?
The timeline would be, we already have all of the correct documents ready to go. So if the town does support this project, once again, we will go right out to bid. And we have all those documents ready to go. A contractor will be chosen, and then we then hand over the property to that contractor to get our project done. It's about a three-month build process. Some stuff can be done now, so, which is nice, that if we do have a little bit of a mild start to our winter, or a mild winter in general, the contractor can go in and do a lot of preparation work for the actual property. And then, in that April, May, June timeframe, is where the bigger parts of the construction would be done. With an open date, last year, we were projecting June 8th is when the project would be completed. We'd go back through that final checklist to make sure that everything is completely done, and to our liking as a town. And then we open the pool for summer camp, right when the kids end school.
Now, this has been, your article has been recommended by both the Appropriations Committee and the Capital Planning Committee. It's sponsored by the Community Preservation Committee, which, do you know anything about the funding source for that? I mean, I guess my point being, as I understand it, this will not come from the general tax base, should it be approved. It comes from the Community Preservation Fund.
Yes. And I think that's a really great benefit to the town, is to have a project of this scope come into the town and not raise the taxes of those that live in this town, is wonderful. I feel it's a win-win. You know, your taxes aren't going to go up, but your recreation services are. And that's really, really nice. And the Community Preservation Committee and Fund is for recreation, open space, and to really add enhancements to the town through that fund. So it's a great win-win for the town, and it's wonderful for those kids who will be in the pool at the age of four, and those who could come to the pool at the age of 85. You know, it's really a wonderful project, and it's going to allow us to do a lot.
Well, that, ladies and gentlemen, is a summary of Article nine, seeking $350,000 approval for $350,000 from the Community Preservation Fund for repairs and improvements to the pool at Pine Knoll. Thank you, Colin.
Thank you.
Article 10 has to do with, I guess, property maintenance and the responsibilities of homeowners with respect to maintenance, and I guess more specifically, what happens if that maintenance is not, does not take place. Tell us what Article 10 is seeking to do.
Okay. The purpose of Article 10, as people once again may realize driving around town, there's some houses that have been foreclosed on or abandoned. And eventually, the lawns get to be quite unruly, and the property gets to be in disrepair. And it becomes not only a health issue, but, you know, a safety issue in certain circumstances, depending on where the properties are located. So what we're trying to do with this warrant item is to allow the town to take action to correct these problems, you know, be it high grass, or trash, or whatever on the property. And actually, bill, if you will, be it the bank or whoever the current owner of the property is, with the stipulation that if it's not paid, it gets added as a municipal lien to the piece of property, so that when the property is sold, the town will get reimbursed for what they've spent.
So what would be, this would be a process by which requests would have been made by somebody from the town to the homeowner to clean up the property, and that doesn't take place? Is there then a second warning, or does the town, how do you see this thing being implemented?
Well, sometimes... Well, sometimes, we've been fortunate, we have a few cases in town. We've been fortunate with one, I think it was bank-owned. And they did actually, after two or three times, my fellow board member contacting them, they did finally send somebody out to take care of the lawn. But there's another property, in particular in town, that hasn't been done, and it's owned by a large bank, and I'm just sort of editorializing here, but they really don't care. And to get through to the proper people to handle this is virtually impossible. So we contact them and try to get them to do something, and then if they don't, as the warrant says, if they don't correct the problem within 10 days of, you know, us notifying them, that we have the right to correct the problem, and charge them for the cost of correcting the problem, plus a $200 administrative fee.
Okay. The other article which is not sponsored by the Board of Selectment is actually a citizen's petition, Article 11. This has to do with raising and appropriating $325,000 for repair to the tennis courts in town. And with us to discuss the article, and the reasons for the article, are Karen Forthrap Myers and Sam Pizzanelli, both members of the East Long Meadow Tennis Association. So tell us what this is all about. What are you looking to do?
Well, as the article stipulates, we're looking for the town to appropriate $325,000 for the complete demolition and the complete construction of new tennis courts at the East Long Meadow High School. It came about for a number of reasons. Basically, Karen and her husband, who helped run the rec program during the summer for the young kids. I've worked five years as assistant coach for the East Long Meadow High School girls' tennis team. We've played tennis all our lives, and we've been around those courts for many, many years. I went to high school there back in 1973 was my graduation. You'll find that those front three courts were built sometime in the 60s. The back three were built when I graduated, around 1973. Since then, very little's been done to those courts. The only thing that occurred was in the front courts, a private citizen out of his own pocket rehabbed the front three courts and repaired the major cracks that were beginning to show in the front three. Other than that, these courts are approximately 40 to 55 years old, and nothing's been done with them. And we're, you know, as we did all these classes, and I helped coach the teams, what we saw were the conditions of the tennis courts became worse, year after year. And they began to deteriorate at such a rate that although they were kind of, I wouldn't say a joke, there was an embarrassment about the condition of the courts, they were never really at a point where they were really dangerous. And the feeling Karen and others that have helped sponsor this is that the courts are now becoming dangerous. The cracks are somewhere between two to four inches wide. The weeds that grow in the cracks are anywhere from five to seven inches wide when they're at their peak. And every year, the cracks keep getting bigger. And just recently, we had another subcontract come out to take a look at the courts, to get an idea what it would cost to repair them. And he did a measurement. He has a device to measure the cracks. And the total linear footage is 3,400 feet of cracks. Now, I like numbers, that's approximately two-thirds of a mile. The cost to repair two-thirds of a mile of cracks that range from two to four inches wide, and in some areas, big chunks are actually starting to fall apart, is very, very expensive. There are no warranties, there are no guarantees, other than that the cracks will appear again in the following year, and they will be worse than they were prior to being fixed. They do have one product that will, you know, when used, can give you a small warranty window, but the cost of that was half the price of what we got as a quote for redoing the entire tennis courts. And that includes removing everything, rebuilding the base with four inches stone, three inches of asphalt, all new fence, new nets, new posts, new gates with latches, I might add, because currently there are no latches on any of the gates. The price was approximately $235,000. The price to fix the courts is approximately $122,000. Now, for further financing into this project, Karen is a member of the Western Mass Tennis Association, and is intimately involved with the USTA and understands the USTA. There's a grant process that she's familiar with, that would enable us for new construction to get up to 20% of the total project cost with a cap of $50,000. So there's a potential out there. There's no guarantee, but if we follow the guidelines that the USTA desires, and build them, build the courts to their specifications, there's a high likelihood we're gonna get money, and quite a bit of it. In addition to that, there are other organizations, such as the Western Mass Tennis Association.
USTA, Western Mass.
USTA, Western Mass. USTA New England, where there's also some other funds that can be gotten. All these funds will help to lower the cost of the new construction. They're not available to that extent for repairs. In addition to that, the East Long Meadow Tennis Association, which was formed back, was it?
About 12 years ago.
Yeah, it was a while back. Has raised $30,000 and committed that money for new construction. So there's a lot of money that's available for the town to come in and finish the job, probably under the budget of the allocated amount we asked for. We have not gotten quotes on the lights, but we do wanna try to do the lights as well, because there's a lot that can be done in the evening hours. Especially with tennis matches that start at 3:00 during the school year, and finish sometime around 7:30, 8:00 at night, and that's early in April. So it's quite cold, and it's quite dark. So we've gotten a number of quotes, we've, two vendors, and they run from 235, that we mentioned, all the way from the 280 to the 320 of a second vendor. The first vendor did give us a quote some time ago.
Yeah, it was a while ago. The second vendor, we know we can get that price down if we have a local vendor actually take the courts apart. That was their concern. They're not experts in taking down what's there, so we know we can get that 320 down. So those are just ballpark, depending on what we're looking at.
So although the article asks for approval of the 300,000, 325,000, you're anticipating that it will be, that A, it'll come in less at that, and B, there will be other funds, no guarantees, but there are other funds that can be, or may be able to be accessed to further reduce the town's piece of it?
But the East Long Meadow Tennis Association money is a guarantee.
That is guaranteed. You said that was $30,000.
That's $30,000. And it's for new construction.
No, I was just gonna add that the courts are in terrible condition. If anybody hasn't been there, they should go look at them. They are terrible, they're dangerous. You can't really play a competitive match there, because the cracks are so wide, and the weeds in full season are so, they mound up. So it's a tripping hazard. So the high school teams, you know, who have opponents come to these matches, it's really, it's not a good situation. So now, we really think now is the time, because they've gotten to the point where they're so bad that they need to be redone, and there is potential grant money out there that may not always be available. So we'd really like to piggyback on that availability, and we're looking for the money from free cash. So, you know, it's not a situation where we believe it would raise the taxpayers' money. The money is available from free cash, plus this grant money, and we keep our kids safe.
Right, and it's, to us, it's an urgent matter. I mean, it is getting dangerous. I mean, I made a joke about the latches. Balls roll out during tennis matches for the high school into the parking lot. I mean, it's happened more than once. If someone doesn't have a bungee cord, we can't secure the gate. I mean, something as simple as that could create a serious situation, simply because a ball rolls out into the parking lot. And the fence itself is another disaster. I spoke to one senior who's since graduated, who had to get tennis shots because he did cut himself on the tennis fence. The fence is peeling from underneath, it's pulled away from the asphalt. We've actually used four old tennis nets to cover the bottom of the fence, so the balls won't roll out into the field, or the baseball fields, or the other courts. From the top, it's actually starting to cave in, especially where that, there's a beautiful tree that provides a lot of shade, but unfortunately, that tree is now starting to break the fence from the top down. It's encroaching on the tennis courts. They're about, it comes in about 10 feet into the courts. It's actually, during play, you have to actually stop some of the points, because it actually gets in the way. So it's been a frustrating period. There was talk at one time to do it with the parking lots, but it hasn't happened, and the courts since then have gotten much, much worse. And they are dangerous. I mean, they're just, they're very slick too, by the way. The surfacing is starting to peel off just about every court. So usually, there's like two layers, or three layers of paint, and we are down to the base. You can actually see the asphalt in many places. So there's a problem, and it's gotta be addressed, and the time is running short, because we're gonna have to do something. We felt that asking for money from free cash for a capital project is not unusual, it's been done before. Although 250,000 or thereabouts, or three and a quarter's a lot of money, it's one of the smaller projects I've seen go through. Plus, we have the opportunity to get, we have at least 30,000 available, substantially more now, and it's for new construction.
Some people might be concerned, because they're hearing about the school facility study, and what might be the impact of the new courts, being, you know, if we build a new high school in town, what's gonna be the impact on the courts? Because they're right next door, and do we really wanna spend this money? And we have been assured by both the superintendent and the architects that these courts will not be affected at all in anything that they're considering. So we should be good to do these courts and not wait for that project. And the other thing I really wanna mention and bring up too, is that tennis is such a great sport. We have 50-some-odd kids at the high school playing tennis. We have a growing park and rec tennis program for kids. There are lots of new things in tennis where we're teaching kids to play on shorter courts, so they can learn, you know, tennis at their level, and really get excited about it. So it's just, it's such a great sport for these kids. I'd hate to have to lose that in this town. You know, it's such a great community resource.
The courts too are used by gym classes. We were there measuring the lines and the cracks. There was at least 30 students for that particular class, and there were three classes that day, so there's approximately 90 students that won Wednesday. So there are people using the courts. There are not as many people using the courts now as there used to be. And there's a reason. And the reason is you can't have a competitive match, under USTA rules especially. I'm not even sure about the Mass Scholastic, we might have a problem there too as well, I don't know. But there's, it's gotta be dealt with.
Now, neither the Appropriations Committee nor the Capital Planning Committee have voted to recommend your article. What do you have to say about that? How do you address that?
Well, the reasons they gave me, there were two, two primary reasons. One, there was a lack of any recommendation from the school committee, because technically, the high school is responsible for the tennis courts. The second reason they gave was, in particular, is one project being more important than another. Now, as to the first point, the school committee is not recommending it, nor are they recommending it for a reason. And I think the reason, this is being done October 10th, down the hall, they're having a meeting regarding the different results of that facility study. And one of them is a brand-new high school. Another one is total renovation of the high school. And it is extremely more money than the 325,000. They're in another process, they're in another point. They don't disagree the courts are awful, they don't disagree the courts need to be removed and redone, but they can't make that recommendation, because it's just another serious issue on the horizon. Unfortunately, for the courts, and for the people who play on the courts, especially the kids, that project is at least a six-year venture. Those courts aren't even gonna be there in six years. There's gonna be so much upheaval from the cold, and that they'll become unplayable, much like the Palmer Courts have been, that were condemned, actually. So to that extent, I understand why they don't give us a recommendation one way or the other. As far as the second point, all these projects are important. I'm not saying the tennis courts are more important than the parking lot, or any of these other projects that are out there. What I am saying is there's an urgency to the tennis courts that has to be dealt with. We either keep the courts, or we don't. There's a choice coming up. And if we wanna keep the courts, then we should act now, because there's money available, and we have the opportunity to grab the money, and get it, and help defray some of the cost of rebuilding these tennis courts. There are a lot of good projects, and this is one of them. I'm not saying it's more important, I'm saying it's as important as many of those other projects. And if it has to fall upon the private citizens, so be it. That's what East Long Meadow is all about. We are a small community that actually follows the rule of democracy, where we all get to vote as legislators on something like this. So this became important enough to the people that are involved, the people whose children have gone through the system, or are going through the system, or will be going through the system. And I think it's important enough that it's a great game, it's a fantastic game, that you can play. I've played in tournaments where, you know, nationals, where people are over 70 years old, they have an over 80s division. It's a game that can be played from the age of five all the way up to 85. It's a wonderful game, it's for the community, it's a way of bringing people together, it's our whole, you know, you got the football fields, you got the entertainment during the summer, and you got the tennis courts. And they're all right there. And I think it's important enough that the town have an opportunity to vote on this.
Well, thank you very much. So ladies and gentlemen, that's Article 11, a request for $325,000 for essentially a new set of tennis courts at the high school property. The final article, Article 12 on the warrant, has to do with impact studies. As everybody knows, casinos are likely to, a casino is likely to be permitted and authorized either in Springfield by MGM, or in Palmer by Mohegan Sun. The Gaming Commission will be making their decisions sometime in 2014 on the applications, assuming Palmer approves the Mohegan Sun application in that particular town. There are obligations that the casino operators have, not only with respect to the so-called host community, be it Springfield or Palmer, but also to communities who are likely to be affected by the casino. And East Long Meadow, I'm sure Paul will be explaining, is clearly one of those who could be affected, certainly if Springfield were to be the recipient of the license, and possibly even Palmer. So tell us what this is looking to accomplish.
Okay. As everyone knows, as you said, there's probably gonna be a casino somewhere in the area. We are more concerned with Springfield than Palmer, although they both may impact us. But what the surrounding communities, the sort of things the surrounding communities have to worry about would be housing issues if people were moving into town, you know, obviously, we added housing issues. Traffic is a big one, crime, and just other uses of town services that, you know, that may be affected by an increased amount of traffic and increased number of people moving in and out of town, either permanently or temporarily. So we have, Pioneer Valley Planning Commission is, we are in a study, traffic study through the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, so that would not be part of what we would be paying for here, that's taken care of by them. However, that's all they're doing, is a traffic study. So studies on other things like housing, crime, you know, if there were- So, studies on other things like housing, crime, you know, if there were going to be any effects on schools with people moving in and adding a burden onto the schools, we would have to hire someone to do a, you know, a consultant-type person to do a study on any other aspects that may affect the town should a casino come in. So, this is what we're, this is what we're looking for is the ability to hire this consultant and pay them. Now, I know we've been approached by MGM and they do have funds available to partially reimburse for this, but we haven't, we've seen nothing in writing. So, obviously, until you see something in writing, you know, the hope is there that they do have a war chest of money, if you will, that they're willing to give out to assist us in these studies. So, but there are no specific dollar amounts. So, we're just looking for the ability to conduct this study and be able to pay the consultant with the thought that, you know, hopefully, we'll get reimbursed, at least part of it, if not all of it.
Now, will there be a specific dollar attached to the motion seeking approval for the consultant?
No, because we don't, we haven't identified the consultant yet, so we don't know what the cost will be. So, until we do.
Do you have a range? I mean, this is, does this give the board a blank check? I mean, is there?
Well, I, we don't, I know it's not, you know, I mean, I think we were looking in the vicinity of maybe 15,000 to 20,000, but we don't have a specific figure, so I don't really want to, you know, commit to anything. We may have, I will make an effort to have a better idea when we get to the floor.
So, the concept is that if this were to be approved, we would have information from Pioneer Valley Planning on the traffic impact, and I suspect that could be significant. And then, the consultant that you hire, if this is approved, would then sit down with MGM or whomever to discuss other mitigations and other reimbursements and the like that the casino operator would commit to?
Yes, and also sit down with, say, our, you know, our DPW people and maybe some people from the school department and get an idea of any potential problems that may arise, you know, with a casino coming in so we can be proactive as far as, you know, looking at things before they happen as opposed to all of a sudden getting hit by increased housing or increased schooling or increased crime.
And educate me a bit here. What incentive does the casino operator have to agree to whatever suggestions the consultant or the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission may make? Does all of this occur before the license is issued and the casino operator can then say to the Gaming Commission, "We've reached agreements with East Long Meadow or Long Meadow or Hamden or whatever," and that improves their chances for ultimate approval? Is that your understanding?
I don't know, to be honest with you, if it'll improve their, you know, chances of getting their license. I know, obviously, they want to be a good, for lack of a better word, host to their neighboring communities. And I know also that they have a sum of money set aside for, you know, for mitigation should we identify these problems. You know, obviously, problems are problems and throwing money at them is wonderful, but it does help if, you know, if we have increased services due to this in one form or another than, due to the casino, then it would be nice to know that those are being covered as opposed to coming out of our pockets on top of, you know, on top of what we regularly planned for. So, I honestly don't know if that has to be done before or after they get the license, but I know, I know the process is coming quick because I think it's towards the end of the year that we have to have, you know, sort of our ducks in a row or beginning of next year. So, I think they are planning on taking action on this before they put a shovel on the ground.
I see. Well, that was the last article, but it's not the last item on the warrant. And the last item is a resolution, which is directly related to Article 12. It is a resolution as opposed to an article to see if the citizens of the town will vote to approve a resolution which constitutes essentially disapproval of any casino gambling in Western Massachusetts. Now, given the fact that the state law allows for gambling in Western Massachusetts under the approval of the Gaming Commission, the vote itself will be non-binding. So, Paul, tell us why this is on the warrant and what it is, what message is trying to be sent and to whom?
Well, as you may know, in some of our surrounding communities, there have been city councilors and boards of selectmen who have taken their own votes as to whether they're pro or, you know, for or against casinos. And we just felt it would be actually more interesting to see what the flavor of the town is. And as you said, it's non-binding. It's not, it's not going to change whether MGM goes into Springfield or Mohegan goes into Palmer, but it'll just be interesting to see what the town thinks about casinos, you know, in general and especially in Western Massachusetts.
Okay. Well, that, ladies and gentlemen, is the sum and substance of what you will be asked to act upon on Monday, October 21st. The warrant, as I mentioned, is also published in our website. And as you've heard, there are significant decisions to be made in, which will affect all of us in one way, shape, or form. So, I urge your attendance at 7:00 at the high school. Please come, exercise your right to act as a legislator for our town. Thanks, and I'll see you then.